Welcome. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 54953, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 202312, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Welcome to today's city council meeting today, Monday, February 27, 2023. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District One, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District Two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District Four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District Three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. And please stand for an invocation by Chris Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we're thankful for our beloved nation and our beloved city, and for all gathered here this evening. We ask your blessing. May you grant wisdom and guidance, understanding to those that are gathered here, especially our council, city staff. We pray for our citizens tonight. Give them hearts of goodwill. May we all be good neighbors here. Bless our community and our neighborhoods with law and order. Thank you for our police, our firemen, our first responders. Bless them, keep them safe, bless their families, keep us all safe in these days and times. May everything that is done tonight will be done to the benefit of this city. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Today, we have two proclamations and two presentations. I will be stepping up to the podium. Give me one second. First proclamation today is declaring February 2023 as Black History Month. Whereas the City of Series takes pride in recognizing February 2023 as Black History Month and celebrates the many achievements and contributions our society and community made by African-Americans. And whereas, the origins of Black History Month dates back to 1915, where Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson founded the organization known today as Association for the Study of American African-American's Life and History. And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week in February of 1926, and for many years, the second week of February, chosen to concede with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, was celebrated by African-Americans in the United States. And whereas, African-Americans have played a significant role in our nation's history by making valuable and lasting contributions. And whereas, all Series citizens are encouraged to pause and reflect on the contributions of the African-American community to our national and local identity, and look to the future to improve society so that we may live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, Councilmembers James Casey, Rosalinda Vera, and Daniel A. Martinez, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in the City of Series to celebrate the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to step aside.
On behalf of our esteemed President Wendy Byrd, the local chapter 1048 kindly agrees and accepts this proclamation. And I want to thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your great leadership. And my friend back there, Councilman Casey, and we can pray for your guys' continuous success and call upon us anytime you need us.
Our second proclamation is in celebration of our birthday here in the City of Series. Right after this, I will introduce Michelle Finch from the Representative Bill's Office of Juan Alanis, where she will also have something for us, and she might say a couple of words. I will begin. A recognition of Series' 105th year anniversary. Whereas Daniel Whitmore founded Series in 1867 and built his first home in 1870. Whereas in 1871, Emma J. Carter, daughter of Levy and Fana Carter, selected the name Series due to its fruitful soil that was a reminder of the Roman pre-Christian goddess of the same name. And whereas, Series was incorporated into a general law city of the State of California on February 25, 1918. And whereas, the first regular meeting of Board of Trustees was held March 11, 1918. And whereas, the first election of Board Trustees was held April 8, 1918, by Von D. Whitmore and was elected as mayor. And whereas, Series has become a wonderful place to live and raise a family with many cultural and community traditions. Whereas together, we achieve, is the motto Series lives by and has flourished throughout, excuse me, and the motto is "Together We Achieve" is the motto of Series, and we live and flourish by this throughout the decades. And whereas, another milestone has been reached by the City of Series, where this is the 105th year that we celebrate. Now therefore, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Vera, and Daniel A. Martinez, do hereby proclaim February 25, 2023, as 105th anniversary of Series and invite all Series residents, businesses, and organizations to join the city in celebration. Thank you. And now I'm going to go ahead and invite Michelle Finch up here.
Thank you for Mayor Lopez and council members for some time here. I stand before you, representing the California Legislature, Assembly District 22. Now therefore, I, Assemblymember Juan Alanis, on behalf of the California State Assembly, would like to congratulate the City of Series on its 105th anniversary. Congratulations. And many more.
I appreciate this, and I guess, Alice, you just got to find a home for this. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. God bless. Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to Stan RTA presentation on new routes. We have Adam Barth. You're here, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Great. I'm Adam Barth, and the CEO for the Stan RTA or the San Sust Regional Transit Authority. And tonight, to talk about, here to talk about the new and restructured routes that we have at the Stan RTA. If you remember, last summer, came to, came here to provide a report on where we were going with the transit routes here in Series and throughout the county. And so we've worked over the last year and a half or so to develop the ideas, get input, and we're now at a point now to implement the routes, and the new routes will be implemented on Sunday, March 5, just a week from now. So just a little bit on the outcomes that came out of our Vision 232 project was to redesign the fixed route system to be more, to be more effective, to really get more people on the bus. Want to make more, the operating hours more equitable across the whole system, including here in Series. Create some regional hubs throughout the county with one being here in Series. Definitely want to thank Christopher, who we've worked with on your staff, to help us develop these routes and develop the areas that we're going to develop here in Series. More to improve the messaging and passenger technologies on the bus. And all these, all these ideas were approved by the Board of Directors in October 2022. And the changes will go into effect just in a week or so. So tonight, I'm going to go through each of the changes, I mean, each of the routes. So this is just a map of what the new route system looks like. I can go through each route, and there's five of them here in Series. The first one is Route 29, which is a little bit about what Route 29 used to look like, but also adds into Route, what, 15, the little, looks like today. So it's because it's combining the whole route into one. I originated in downtown Modesto and terminating at the Walmart here in Series. This route will run every half an hour on weekdays and every hour on weekends. So provides great service here through downtown, into downtown Series. The next route, Route 42, is on the south Modesto side, but definitely comes through Series, and we're adding a kind of a new section on this route to come down Whitmore and down Blaker by Central High School, and then over the freeway to Walmart. Walmart, you'll find, is becoming our hub for all these routes. This route will also be every half hour on the weekdays and every hour on the weekends. It will serve the CSA complex there off Hackett Road. Route 47 is a route that has been restructured a lot. It used to be Route 36, and it used to be go into West Modesto. And a new part of it that we're serving is going down Hatch Road from Hatch Road on Carpenter, Hatch Road all the way from Carpenter all the way to Mitchell, right at the whole section of service, then down Mitchell to Walmart there as well. So a lot of what we heard from the community, especially in west and south Modesto, is that they wanted more direct access into Series. And so this route provides that direct access into Series to different locations that people want to. The next route, 61, this is a route that comes through Series on the south side, coming from Houston into Series to the Walmart, and then a straight shot up the freeway to Modesto. And this will run every 60 minutes on weekends. And serve on weekends as well. Then lastly, Route 15 is a route that goes from Trollock through Keys to Series to Walmart here in Series. Run every hour throughout the week, seven days a week. Some of these routes, like Route 15, Route 61, did not operate on the week on Sundays before. So we've improving service to have it run every hour, which it does not run that way today, and to run it seven days a week. So providing much better service to the community, both in Series and outside of Series to come into Series. So we have a new look to the route maps. If you recall in the past, we had a ride guide. So the ride guide had every route in it. It was a thick book, and we found that a lot of people only needed one or two routes in that book. And so a lot of it was waste. And so going to a route brochure now, which is a different route brochure for each route. So you just take the routes that you need, and that way, there's not a lot of waste. And so it's a new route brochure. We've got some great feedback so far on the design of the route brochure, and we'll have those here for folks to pick up along with on the bus as well. Bus stops, a lot of the same, but bus stops will remain. If the route already came down down that road, the bus stops will stay the same. Bus stops will be established. There's some new areas where the buses don't go today. So you may have seen some new bus stops around town. They have a bag over them saying that bus stop is not in service yet because it's not in service yet. But we are establishing those new stops throughout town, throughout the system. Each route, each bus stop has that bus stop sign there. It's in the upper right corner of that screen. That's what this bus stop sign looks like. And then there'll be an information post on the post there of the bus stop with QR code to take people to the Track the S app. And that app can provide information to riders on the schedule. It actually can, you can track your bus in real time as well. Click your route, you can see where the bus is at as it moves along. You actually watch the little bus move along on the map, see where it's at. So you'll know if you missed it, or if it's still coming, which is great to have. I use it all the time. On the demand response side, this is for those that are unable to use the fixed route bus due to a disability. So we have our ADA paratransit service that picks people up at their origin, takes people to a destination in our service area. That system won't change at all. It'll still cover the entire service area here in Series, and will continue to provide that door-to-door service for those with disabilities. Then next, the medevan service is a service that we operate from downtown Modesto to the Bay Area, to major medical centers in the Bay Area like UCSF, Stanford. We found that a lot of folks not wanting to drive to the Bay Area or in Bay Area traffic can use the medevan service to get to those medical appointments. People can make a reservation for that trip, and they can make the return trip on the same day, or they can spend a night or two if they need to and get that return trip. So it's $10 for the patient and $5 for the companion. And so it's a great service that we found, and want to make sure that you're aware. Our fare structure hasn't changed. It's still $2 to ride the bus. Once you pay that $2 on the bus, you get a pass, and you can ride the bus as much as you want for the rest of that, for the rest of that day on any other service we operate except for Bart and Response Services. If you're senior and vet disabled, it's a dollar for the all-day pass. There are other options you can get for seven-day and 31-day passes. Additionally, youth are free year-round, all day long, on any service that we operate, including the demand response system. So they're able to ride it free, that's ages 00 through 18. And if you're an MJC student, you ride for free as well. And our ADA trip is $2.50 a ride. So with that, there are a lot of changes that are coming, not just here in Series, but throughout our system. And we know that change can be hard sometimes, but these routes are meant to make it a whole lot easier to ride the bus and to get around the county and to get more people to more places. But change takes time. So we asked you, if you're a bus rider, or you're looking to ride the bus, just be patient. Adjustment does take time, and we'll continue to add more bus stop amenities over time, and we'll look at the service and see how we're doing. Or, you know, this isn't set in stone. If we miss something or it looks like we need to change something, we're open to that. We'll make changes as. With that, you can learn more. Look at all of this, all of the maps and schedules online at our website, ridess.org. You can call us as well, if you just want to call customer service and ask for questions about it, or you just want to pick up a printed route brochure, you can get those on the bus, or here in Series as well, right at the customer service center. And with that, that's all that I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I appreciate the time.
Before I move on to Daniel Martinez's press button, hopefully I don't steal your rant on this particular question. On Route 50, I see it crosses the airport. Do the buses stop at the airport?
They do, will not. So the Route 50 will stay on Yosemite. So we won't DB it off Yosemite to go over to the airports. There's just no commercial service. We haven't had any comments to provide that service over to the airport. So.
Okay. I know that they do have a renter center there where they rent vehicles there. There are some flights that go out of that airport. Just curious, maybe offline, I can talk to you about that. But I think it would be a great idea. There's Tesla Park in there as well. There's Tesla Park in there as well. So that's just something that you probably didn't realize was happening. I guess the other question is for, so for the youth up until 18, how do they get their free pass, if they wanted to get their free pass?
So you don't have to get a pass. You just step on the bus and say, "I'm 16 years old." Okay? Hop on board. That's all you have to do. That is that easy.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Those are all the questions. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Barth, for this presentation. I had a quick question. I noticed none of our new routes now go to Kaiser Doctors or Memorial. Will the future routes through Series have any routes going to the major hospitals? Then you have the medevan that'll take to Bay Area hospitals, but what about our local ones here?
Sure. So I did show all the routes that go into Modesto. If I go back a little bit, the map shows a little bit of us in Modesto. It doesn't really. So there are a lot of other routes. Once those routes that are here in Series get to downtown Modesto, to the transit center, then everyone can connect to all the other routes in Modesto. So you could take Route 32 to Memorial Hospital, Route 22, or 25 to doctors, Route 48 to Kaiser. Route 48 is a new route. We combine two routes to make it one, so it wouldn't be two hops to get up to Kaiser Hospital. Kind of understand how the route system works today, but we're making it a whole lot easier to get from downtown Modesto to Kaiser Hospital on one route. Thank you.
Councilmember Vera?
And I just want to comment in regards to what Mayor Javier and I were mentioning regarding the Modesto Airport. A couple of the new high school seniors are no longer seniors. They're now college freshman age, are now starting to get jobs at Tesla. And I know they've been asking me about how do I get to the airport, especially with being vehicle insecure. The bus picks up at 4:00 or 6:00 a.m. They're coming back at 6:00 p.m., and they're asking me, "How do I get there?" There's not transportation from the other side of the freeway, which is where District 2 is, other than it looks like Blaker, Kansas. It looks like it goes through that. I can't see 42 very well. But I think that's another concern that we may want to consider is finding a way to kind of get them out to the Tesla transportation parking lot there at the airport or there in Salida. There's the other pickup for Tesla for those that are catching the van out to the Tesla warehouse.
Any more questions from the council? Any members of the public that have any questions? Have a observer. Just one second, so we can double check. Might have just died.
Batteries. Oh, batteries. Yes, I was listening to the gentleman's presentation, and it was all fine until he got to the medevan. And being a senior like myself, and I know quite a few in the city here, and it's a good thing, but then it came to the subject of notation of one way. Well, there's a lot of seniors here that we live among, and they don't have transportation of their own. And when they need to go see someone in the Bay Area, only because a lot of times doctors don't want to work out here, and there's not a big broadband specialist here, so they might have to go to the Bay Area. But if they only take them one way, they might not even have driver's license. They take them one way, you know, there they are, stuck, trying to find a way back. They don't have no friends anymore. They've all died. You know, there's no communication at all, really, for some of these poor folks, but they are concerned about their health. So when it came to that subject, it really hit a nerve, because here's an individual that really needs to see a specialist or some procedure outside of this area. And now they're going somewhere, and now they have to worry besides whatever treatment they're getting. They have to worry about trying to get back, you know. There's some people that might work out fine, but I'm sure there's some people that will put them out, and, you know, they'll cut short a procedure they need, or seeing a doctor they really need. And personally, if I was in that particular picking these things out, I would eliminate that one. They need to improve that. Thank you.
I could be wrong. It says here, "They only take passengers to and from their scheduled medical facilities." That's about it? Does that mean that that's not one way? I just want some clarification. I think it's a good point that he's making, but just want to clarify.
Sure. I can definitely clarify. It is round-trip transportation. So you can take the bus from Modesto into the Bay Area for an appointment, and then the bus will bring you back that same day. Or if you needed to stay the night, it could bring you back the next day or in five days, whatever you needed to, whatever trip you needed for your medical payment. So it is a round-trip transportation. The cost is one-way. So it's $10 for the patient one way, it'd be $10 for the return trip. So it'd be a $20 round-trip fare. So definitely do the round-trip.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, now moving on to code enforcement, which I believe Captain Perry has a really great presentation for us. Just because I've seen some of the photos before, I got a little excited. Christina? Christina? Welcome.
Well, I certainly hope I have a great presentation for you guys tonight.
I'm sorry. I think you will.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Chris Perry, Captain, Police Department. And tonight, we're going to be talking about our code enforcement program. All these folks standing behind me make up our code enforcement division. We're missing one tonight, but I'll start here to my right. This is Lieutenant Trenton Johnson. He is now supervisor of the code enforcement division. Next, we have Jeff Varney, one of our senior code enforcement officers. Over here to my left is Lauren Medina, and she's our full-time code enforcement secretary. And then we have Jack Taylor. He's our newest code enforcement officer, full-time. And right behind me in the orange is David Garcia, and he's one of our part-time code enforcement officers. And missing tonight is Jeff Hopkins, another one of our full-time code enforcement officers. He couldn't be with us tonight. As you all know, about a year ago or so, council voted to beef up our code enforcement division based on a lot of different blight and homelessness issues and things like that that were going on in our city. And as a part of that council's decision, it was to approve some of these extra positions to include a police lieutenant as the code enforcement supervisor and a couple extra full-time code enforcement officers. A lot of the work that we handle surrounds things like illegal dumps, graffiti abatement, livestock, vacant lots, zoning violations, public nuisances, business violations, street vendors, shopping cart retrievals, leaf and limb, and graffiti abatement. Just to name a few. As of 2022, I've included some of our statistics, and you can see from the charts here that prior to the hiring of the extra personnel, some of our statistics were pretty low. At that time, we were actually just operating with one code enforcement officer, which was Jeff Varney. And he was a pretty busy guy as a one-man team. And as you can see, it was really hard for him to handle the show all by himself. But in March of 2022, when Officer Hopkins got here, and then we got our full-time secretary, Lauren Medina, and then shortly after, we got Jack Taylor and the part-timers. We actually had another part-timer, but he since has been hired full-time with the streets division. So our second part-time position right now is vacant. We're actively recruiting for that position. But you can see that a lot of our numbers have increased. Our illegal dumps, you know, we've handled 869 illegal dumps in 2022, and abated 265 homeless encampments in 2022 alone. And again, you can see where the numbers have increased from the increase in staff. These folks are out there every day hitting the streets and doing a really good job with that. And again, as the numbers show. Here's some more statistics that are continued. As it relates to the inspections. As it relates to the inspections and re-inspections for twenty twenty-two, we've done two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven inspections on properties, homeless camps, which were required to post now as well. Street vendors, twenty twenty-two, we've issued a hundred and seven citations. And that's not not to count how countless warnings that we've given them as well. I know when I first took over the code enforcement division and Officer Varney was the only code enforcement officer. Most of our reporting is done on the GoGov app. And at any given time, he would have been down almost a hundred calls on that GoGov app. Now, with the increase in staff, all of those calls are completely caught up and we actually handle calls on our GoGov app as they come in one by one each day. The GoGov app is never behind now. So if anybody reports anything to our code enforcement division via the GoGov app, those calls are handled that day. And I should note that the code enforcement officers work seven days a week. I would love to say twenty-four hours a day, but that's not the case, but they do work seven days a week. As you can see in this slide here, these are what our vehicles look like. But the the white truck that is not marked is actually not in our fleet anymore. It's been replaced by two additional vehicles that are marked. They all drive pickups. There's three of them. Many of them look just like the first one that's marked. They all have lift gates on them to help with lifting heavy loads. Illegal dumps have been a real challenge in the city for our for our citizens and for our crew. But some of the highlights that we've been able to do to help combat that is our illegal dump hotline that we've created, which is five-three-eight dump. So anybody can call five-three-eight dump. It goes straight to us and they can report any illegal dumps. We make notes of it. And as soon as possible, we get our crew out there and we pick up the dump. I don't know if any of you have noticed, but if you're driving around the city at any given time, it is noticeably cleaner than it was at this time a year ago. Our our crew meets every Wednesday for an hour briefing. And we actually challenge ourselves internally in areas that we can go out and how much garbage that we can pick up and and things like that. We've almost turned it into a small inner competition, which I love because at the end of the day, it's getting all of this trash out of the community anyway. So whatever motivates us, so be it. I'm happy with it. Here's some photos of of some of our illegal dumps. Again, as you can see, we have these trucks piled up really, really high with trash. We do currently have one hydraulic dump trailer, which helps us out a lot. I want to say it's about an eight by ten six by ten or so and with four feet walls and we get that trailer packed all the way to the top almost on a daily basis and taken over to Berta Lottie. Some statistics that we prepared for you all as it relates to our dump weight. So just in January of twenty twenty-three alone, we took thirty-four thousand one hundred and ninety pounds to Berta Lottie. And in December of twenty twenty-two, we took thirty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-five pounds of trash to Berta Lottie. And that's just this crew standing behind alone. In addition to picking up the illegal waste and things like that off the street and dealing with street vendors, a lot of the other things that we deal with is red-tagged properties. Red-tagged properties can be anything from places that are not up to code, substandard living, places with no running water, dilapidated structures, things like that. So we've prepared for you tonight a couple of the major nuisance properties that we've dealt with recently. Just to give you an example of what some of them have have looked like and some of the issues that we have dealt with with them. So this first property is twenty-one twenty-one Venus Drive. We opened this case in February of twenty twenty-one. And this residence was a substandard building. Lack of hot and cold water. It had electrical issues. The public nuisance as it related to blight, there was a lot of garbage and trash riddled all around the front and backyard of the residence. Neighbors were calling left and right on the property being an eyesore and wanting the community and and code enforcement to do something about it. It had abandoned vehicles, discarded furniture and appliances which were visible from the public. Broken windows, doors, ineffective waterproofing, leaky faucets and plumbing fixtures and just flat unsanitary. So our code enforcement team got involved and we red-tagged the property as substandard living and did a lot of things to work with the property owners to get the property cleaned up. At one point, I know we single-handedly, in conjunction with some other city staff, like to include our streets division, went over and actually removed trash out of the front and back of this house ourselves. Here's a photo. The one on the left dictates what the property looked like before we got involved and the photo on the right is a picture of what it looks like after we we got involved. This is the backyard of the residence. And this is some before and afters of the front of the residence. If I'm not mistaken, we now have new owners of this residence and they're keeping the house up quite nicely. The neighbors are very pleased. This is another property. And this was four thirty-seven West Hackett Road. This case was open January of twenty twenty-two. And again, this was substandard conditions, which lacked hot and cold water, electrical issues, public nuisance as it related to community blight, abandoned vehicles, discarded furniture and appliances visible from public right away, broken windows, doors, ineffective waterproofing, leaky faucets and plumbing fixtures, and again, just unsanitary conditions. Picture on the left dictates what this property looked like when we got involved. And the picture on the right is what it looks like now after we've completed our work with it. Again, I think this property has new owners as well. And the the neighborhood surrounding is very happy with the work that we did. Here's some more photos. That's what the inside looked like on the left when we got involved. And then now with the new owners, that's what it looks like on the right. Moving on to weekly projects. Again, like I mentioned previously, we have briefings once a week, usually on Wednesdays at eight o'clock in the morning with our team. During these meetings, we talk about what we want to do for the week as a weekly project. Every week we pick one day and we and we turn it into a project. It could be cleaning up El Camino Avenue or Herndon Road near the freeway. It could be homeless encampments behind several businesses. It could be Dara Street or alleyways. They change weekly. Usually we decide based off of maybe certain calls that come in or complaints or even just our own driving around and things that we see. So we we try to, we try to make the weekly projects high priority cases. And we've been able to get other departments in the city involved to assist us on these weekly projects. Our Public Works, our Streets Department, they've been really helpful with bringing out like tractors and heavy equipment for us to use to be able to clean big areas. I know there's going to be one coming up, which is a big water drainage ditch that's behind the Penske Place off the freeway. And it's full of trash. We're just waiting for the weather to subside so we can get our heavy equipment down there. That area is riddled with so much trash that we couldn't go in there and pick it up ourselves. We have to use even an excavator is going to probably be used in that particular project, but right now the soil is too is too wet for us to go down there. But that's a good example of a weekly project that will be coming up in the near future. But we we can't, we can't kind of thank our our fellow partners enough, again, like the Streets Department and the Public Works Department. Even the Patrol Officers and the Police Department have been have been fantastic with following up on code enforcement cases and and helping us out. I've been at the serious police department for almost thirty years now. And I've actually have never seen a relationship between police officers and code enforcement officers like I see today. These code enforcement officers will be working a property and maybe board up a house and they'll put a a message out to the patrol officers, can you guys take a look at this place at night because we're getting squatters in there? And I I know at least on eight different occasions, our police officers have followed up on these properties, have found people inside these locations and have actually made trespassing arrests on behalf of our code enforcement team. So that's it's a good work that's being done all around. And I definitely want to note that a- as a part of some of these projects is weed abatement. And we really get the weed abatement from our part-timers. And and again, this is something that that we've been lacking in the city of series for quite some time. So when you drive around and we have some of these center medians that are out like on Hatch Road or Whitmore Avenue or or some of these block walls that have vegetation overgrown on them and stuff. Well, now if you drive by where they were full of weeds, they're not anymore. And that's because the part-timers are stopping and they're and they're weeding these areas now. They're trimming these these overgrown hedges on some of our sidewalk block walls and things like that. They're doing this weekly and nobody ever really did that before. So we're really excited to to have the the part-timers on board because they're helping out tremendously in those regards. These are some photos of the guys at work doing that. As you can see, like right there, the entrance, the middle, middle photo, the entrance of Highway ninety-nine. I mean, I can't tell you how long that those weeds have been growing there in that in that little rock area and and they're not anymore because because we're taking care of it. Another project that's kind of always been a hot button with us has been Dara Street. Many, many, many years ago, there was a little community work that was done on Dara Street to kind of re-beautify the area and create some planners and some speed control, bulbous and such. And 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 when it was first done, it was pretty nice, but over the years, it's kind of gotten away. A lot of the planners now don't have shrubbery or a lot of them are just dirt. A lot of them are overgrown with weeds. The alley behind the both sides, the the north and the south alley in the nineteen hundred block of Dara were just really overgrown as well. Cars were parking their vehicles, blocking the alley, so street sweepers or garbage trucks couldn't get down the alley. We found that there was dumpster enclosures, but there was the wrong size dumpsters to fit in the enclosures. So people would walk by and throw their trash over the dumpster enclosure wall, thinking it was landing inside of a dumpster bin, but it was really just landing on on the ground because the dumpster was outside of the bin, you know, because it was too big to fit inside. So we we went out there, we talked to several property owners. We got a really good idea of some of the complaints and some of the issues out there. We've made some improvements. So some of the improvements were we 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 replaced the dumpsters with the right-sized dumpsters that the units need out there to accommodate their trash correctly. We got rid of the block dumpster enclosure wall. It was not needed and it was just being it was just used to to put the trash on the ground essentially. So we actually demolished it. We we installed no parking signs all along the alleyways. So any cars now that are parked in the alley block in the alley, we can actually write tickets to, or we can tow the cars. We have the street sweepers set up on a weekly basis. So our street sweepers now go through their alleys and keep it clean weekly. We conducted weed abatement out there and got rid of all of the weeds that are in their alley and in all of the the dirt planners. Those are just a few things that we're doing out on Dara Street. We're continuing our work out there and we're continuing to work with property owners as well. They still have a few more improvements that they've given us as suggestions. And those are on our on our board to continue, again, probably as the weather gets better. Things like property owners painting some of their buildings and maybe working with our streets department to reconfigure some of those traffic calming issues that they feel are more of a nuisance because it takes away parking, which they lack greatly of over there on that street. So more work to be done, but we're making really good progress, we believe. This is an example out there on Dara Street. So again, the photo on the left is a before in one of the alleys. And you can see in the right after we got done with it, what it looks like now. We wanted to talk briefly on on our free community disposal day that we just had February fourth. This was certainly a collaboration between our city representative, Tony Cordell, and Berta Lottie, and then obviously our code enforcement unit as well. We all worked out there from first thing in the morning all the way to the completion that day. It was the first community disposal day that we've had in the city. So none of us really knew exactly how it was going to go. But it ended up going really, really well, so well that again, we wanted to discuss it. So we saw a total of four hundred and eighty vehicles that day. And we wanted to list some of the stats for you a- a- as a conclusion. So we saw a total of ten thousand one hundred and sixty-two pounds of e-waste that day, including a hundred and seventy-five TV monitors. Two hundred and fourteen mattresses were collected. One thousand two hundred and fifty tires. Total trash weight of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred pounds. And again, twenty-two city staff were present along with representatives from Berta Lottie Disposal, Caltrans, volunteers and the California Conservation Port Personnel. A lot of us, like Lieutenant Johnson, picked up tires and single-handedly put them in these dumpster bins along with Officer Varney. And it was a really dirty job and I think his back told him that or told them that the next day. But but we got it done. And as you can see from those photos, we pretty much turned River Bluff parking lot into a dump. But I'll tell you, at four o'clock that afternoon when we left, you would have never known because our street sweepers and cleanup crew came through and cleaned that entire area. And I mean, there wasn't even a piece of broken glass left on the ground when we left that park. So a huge success. I definitely think it's something that we should do every year. The community loved it. We were thanked like crazy. Some people in this room showed up out there and saw firsthand for yourself. So very good, successful day for sure. These are just more photos of us out there that day. We all had a really good time and always a nice thing when you could say you had fun time at work. We did for sure. Again, I touched on this a little bit earlier, but this is our partnership with Patrol. We're really, really proud of this. Again, it's just kind of something that's never really happened before. Code enforcement and Patrol have just never really worked together too much. It just kind of always seemed like there was a separation and now I'm I'm proud to stand before you and say that we're one big team. So our patrol officers have made eight arrests and have responded to two hundred and sixty-nine of our code enforcement calls for security checks. They they perform extra patrol day and night when requested. And they've removed squatters from several of our code enforcement properties. Sometimes our code enforcement officers go into some homeless camps where they're not greeted very friendly. And at any time, they get on the radio and call for a patrol officer to come and the officers will come and assist them. Training. So training is a big portion of the the success of the team. The California Association of Code Enforcement Officers is the main training platform that the code enforcement officer is required to take. They have three modules. Module one, module two and module three. Attending all three modules gives the code enforcement officers a code enforcement certification. I think right now Officer Varney is the only one that actually has the the entire certification. Officer Hopkins has module one. Has one module and I believe is scheduled in a week or two for another module along with Officer Taylor. And then Officer Taylor will have two more to complete and Officer Hopkins will have one more to complete. But aside from their module training, there's a host of other training for them to attend as well. One of them being the heavy-duty equipment training, things like bucket truck training, they've already attended. This is so they can go over to the city yard and grab This is so they can go over to the city yard and grab some of this heavy equipment themselves and use it themselves without putting a burden on our streets division. Um, you know, as you guys are all aware, all the different divisions are very busy and some even understaffed. So we try not to burden the other departments if we don't have to. So I know recently our code team has attended bucket truck training and heavy du- duty equipment training and have been certified to operate uh many of those pieces of equipment. So now uh on on certain code cases, uh they can go over and borrow the equipment themselves, do all their loading themselves and haul it all all the way, take the equipment back and they don't have to bother any other staff within the city. Uh, here's some photos of the recent bucket truck training. These are the guys in action. In some areas, uh we've been able to install um cameras. And uh these are going to be maybe for uh illegal dumps or something like that in certain uh areas where we continually keep getting them. And that's where things like this bucket truck come in handy because it allows us to go up there and actually mount the cameras ourselves without having to utilize. And this slide, another uh group of photos that depict the uh heavy duty equipment training that uh they all recently attended. So things like the backhoe and tractors are what they're uh certified to operate now. And uh in conclusion, these are just some fun pictures of our team. Uh, we're out in the community every day. We're actually really proud of the work that we're doing. Um, I stand up here before you very proud uh of the code enforcement team. I I do have to say that when I was first asked to take on uh code enforcement, I was a bit nervous about it because as a policeman, I really didn't have a great grasp of what code enforcement entailed. And uh was 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 quite nervous and I didn't what to expect. But um working with this great group of individuals behind me, they make it easy. And uh they've really embraced um the concept of their job and of um about bringing value to this community. I'm extremely proud of them. Even as the as the police captain, I'm not directly over them anymore. I've passed the torch now to Lieutenant Johnson. But uh but they still certainly hold a special place in my heart, no doubt about it. And I still try to go up and attend uh many of their weekly meetings and uh and and they're out doing good things. So with that, that concludes uh our code enforcement presentation and and I invite you guys to ask any questions.
Thank you very much. Does any members of the council have any questions? Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you, Captain Perry and your team uh for the fantastic work. It's not hard to drive around our city and see that things have definitely improved over the years. Uh, so I appreciate the effort you're putting in, especially since you're such a small uh group of only about six of you. You said you're missing one. So that's fantastic. And I also wanted to thank you for your uh your cross department collaboration, working with the PD, assisting them on traffic violations. And I know there's a few major uh traffic accidents last week you guys helped with. So thank you for that.
Very welcome. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much, Captain, and thank you to the team.
Yeah, I think there is an applause. Yes.
Thank you very much. And if there's any questions or comments from the public, please walk up here and state your name.
Uh, Dave Prada Series. I was going to do this on Citizen Communications, but I think it's a code enforcement thing. Uh, for a lot, for quite a while, I've been wondering why leaves and limbs have been picked up, picked up, but we got literature in the mail the the other day and my wife pointed out that January ninth was the last pickup. And the procrastinators, I've seen leaves and limbs and Christmas trees out out there and wondering if code enforcement is doing anything about that because all that stuff's going to be sitting out there till this fall when they start picking up that stuff in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person in line.
You can clearly serious. What do you say? This is probably one of the highlights of living here in series. I gotta admit. That presentation was way beyond expectation. It it's too bad that the people who live in this city for a long time have had to wait this long to see a a vast change. Thank you. I was going to say Lieutenant Perry, but thank you, Captain Perry. One of the questions I got and a lot of people in town have asked, you know, uh, there's that problem with the vendors and other cities have it too, not just series and we all understand that. But we have to focus on the city we live in and part of that is code enforcement. What I want to know, he mentioned that citations have been handed out to vendors. Are these citations where they have to appear in court?
See if this works out. These are typically our admin, our administrative citations. So they they essentially they have to appear before the city.
So it it it's on an ongoing an ongoing database. So when you see them a second time and another citation is handed out, what's procedure after that?
Uh, they can get issued another one. Uh, the citations uh multiply in value of their fines.
When does it, when does it reach another level like uh misdemeanor or something?
Yeah, it'll it it never will reach that that level um because they're administr- their internal administrative fines. And 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 it's kind of a, it's kind of, it's kind of a hard one because um in some cases, you know, if if the person doesn't have a correct ID or something like that, it 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 could, it could even go nowhere for that matter. But a lot of times, or I would say, in most cases, at a minimum, at least gets the message across that we're not tolerating it in the city and we're at least going to stop you, move you along.
So in all reality, they'll just keep getting citations and okay, I understand.
It it can't happen. Yeah.
Yeah. One of the other issues was or that I had was uh uh on the city ordinances. Most of those are, I would assume you're you're in that category of of animal nuisances. And I brought this up to me and Chief Collins have talked about this for quite a few years now. And uh if animal nuisance is part of the program for code enforcement, code enforcement goes home and they don't make animal calls at night. Well, conversation with Chief Collins about sometime in the middle of last year, probably, we had a conversation and he said uh they don't make uh uh nuisance animal calls for any animals. So that goes strictly to the county and it has to do with the JPA. And I'm learning a little bit more through the months and years about the JPA uh and the funding and all this stuff. But people have problems, you know, we have to focus on these little priorities that that make people ill and sick and just, you know, they don't want to live in their neighborhoods anymore. They're frustrated and 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 these things really get to you physically and mentally. You know, and and those, that part really isn't addressed, the physical and mental part that people have to suffer with bad neighbors, you know. When it comes to animals, some people put it up with it for a long time until they can't take anymore and they need some help right away. Well, you ain't going to get no help if Chief Collins is correct in law enforcement or code enforcement is going to come out and try to correct this problem. You know, and somebody officers, uh again, Chief Collins and I talked before at the city council. He had some flyers that was going to be sent out to uh with the officers to to go out on these calls and they did happens at times. But now some of these officers I've talked to, they don't even know what what it's about. They don't, I don't know what a flyer is for this, you know? And that's the last couple of times I had to use the police department. They they didn't know nothing about them. So we need to help these individuals in our neighborhoods and these things are a problem. You know, and you know, now we're dividing it. Is it the police department, is it code enforcement, is it county? And we know the county ain't going to come out at night.
Thank you, Mr. You can, your time is up. Appreciate your comments. Any other members of the public who'd like to make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor John Warren, City of Series.
Thank you.
I would like to uh thank Captain Perry and his team for a a nice presentation. I have been here before the council. Rest my concerns. Past several years. By far was one of the better presentations. There has been quite a bit of improvement. I don't want to be a person to say thank you. But say also be taken into consideration. I do have a few thoughts and I will sit down with with the captain and it will maybe over a cup of coffee. But today I want to say thank you. I want to remind the council that this is a short-lived project based upon this to continue in our city. Find a way to fund these positions. By the way, so please be cognizant of that. Police department and our code enforcement people can do the job that they need to do. Funding and we don't need to lose these people. Training them. Big investment and they're what we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. That is on everybody's radar. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There's no members on Zoom.
Okay, I do have, Rosa, you'd like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I just want to add to the captain's comments. I'm incredibly proud of the team's effort. Um, so Captain Perry, uh Chief Collins, uh, the crew, uh, the code code enforcement team. Thank you uh for the effort. Thank you for the hard work. Um, I know I've stopped by personally the Venus site, um, saw the work that was going on. They were working incredibly hard to clean up that 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 home. Um, and I do know and experienced the gratefulness of the neighborhood and one of the neighbors. Um, when I was leaving the site, someone uh took the time to pull over. Uh, didn't know who I was, didn't know what I was, but expressed their gratitude uh for the city's efforts, for the team's efforts in cleaning up that site. Um, I was out with um I'll call him Hoppy. He liked, he he likes being called Hoppy. So I was out with Hoppy, one of the code enforcement officers um at an upcoming weekly project, clean up one of the uh detention basins and has um become a a a an encampment. And I I can't imagine what sort of effort that's going to take, but it's a huge project. They're going to take it on. Um, they're going to take it on. So they're 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 making a difference. Um, I'm incredible, incredibly grateful um and all the hard work. Um, so thanks to to you folks and the team. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now moving on to citizens communication. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt rules that allow more, no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from making and taking any action on any matters which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an action, an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address city council any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. And we now open up citizens communication for all those in person. If anybody would like to make a comment. Thank you very much.
Didn't know what Captain Perry was going to say tonight.
Please state your name, sir.
Genically serious.
Thank you.
Didn't know what Captain Perry was going to say tonight. So some of this might be a repeat. Uh, I'd like to I I haven't been able to make the last few meetings, but I'd like to thank uh Mr. Jose Perez for coming to the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting and trying to tell his story about his musical nuisance in his neighborhood. I hear you, Mr. Perez. I hope you come back to a series council meeting to tell the community what has been done to solve your problem. Mr. Perez, people in series are listening to what you have to say. You are not alone. This disregard for others and imposing something against our ordinances on one's neighbors is a very bad problem. Series has in different areas of our city. It seems like only a few do these disturbing things to others who just want to enjoy their homes and comfort and peace. The city of series has many ordinances instructed by our city council who were elected by you, the people. As citizens, we need to follow these ordinances in order to live in a comfortable atmosphere we call home. Remember, the city council works for you, the citizens. Just because individuals purchase a home or rent a home does not mean there are not any rules like there might be with living in an apartment or a rental with rules to abide by from the owner. Citizens of the city of series do not like our city ordinance and ordinances, whatever they might be, then come to to council meetings and voice yourselves. You elected a council person in your district and you have a voice. You do not like an ordinance, voice yourself and try to get the ordinance removed and then see what happens to our city. Many individuals do not like rules. I don't like some of them either. But without local ordinances and state laws, think of where our cities and society would be today. Look at it. What is happening to our cities, United States of America and the rest of the world? Mayhem, destruction of society, total disregard and breakdown of values. Among those values, a lot of disrespect for others make a difference in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Everyone, my name is Maisy Silva and I'm from Valley CR SBDC. We are a local nonprofit that serves the businesses of Stanislaus and Toomey County. And we've been around for twenty years as of July, which is a pretty big milestone. But uh uh Mayor Lopez invited me to come speak uh fairly quickly today. I'm going to be on the agenda in the next two weeks to talk about this event more. But we have the bridging the gap event and I have some flyers in the back for people to help me uh pass out if you're able to. But it is a free uh business event for all series business owners. It's for entrepreneurs and people who have been in business for as many years as uh series has been around. So uh we all, again, I'll talk about it more in two weeks, but um we will have four workshops in this room. We're going to be splitting it in half, having um workshops on marketing, uh social media, business leadership and how to start your business. And we will also have two series businesses present that will be interviewed by Mayor Lopez at the beginning and the end of the event. It is only three hours long. We're trying to be um conscious that all business owners can't attend a full uh workshop. Um, so the event will be on March twenty-fourth here. Doors open at eight thirty. Um, and the event will run from nine till twelve. Um, again, if you, um, everyone online and here present, if you could help spread the news to as many series businesses as possible, we would love to support as many people as we can. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And ask Fallon to reach out to the council and other members to receive the invitation here pretty soon. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Anybody on Zoom?
No members with their hands raised on Zoom.
I believe we have two emails that we received, correct?
We do, yeah.
Could us go ahead and read that into the record?
The first email is from Manjeet Desange, Vice President of the Series Garden Club. In her email, she states the Series Garden Club members will be displaying albums and sharing the history of the garden club and its contributions to the city. We would like to invite city council members to view this display on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three from ten AM to twelve PM in the upstairs lobby at the community center. The second email that we received was from Alvaro Franco and it states, Dear City Council, thank you for taking the time to read about concerns regarding animal control and bicycling within series. I appreciate the responses and the follow-up with a copy of the Active Transportation Plan, ATP. I read the plan and I see there are twenty-eight proposed class three bicycle lanes within series. The preliminary cost estimate is over one million dollars. One million forty thousand dollars to be exact. Class three bicycle lanes amount to painted lines on the ground in lanes that would otherwise already be sufficiently wide enough for both vehicles and bicyclists. Please don't spend one million dollars on painted lines. If possible, please use the money to instead upgrade the following to Class I or Protected Class IV Bike Paths. Enlisted are a number of projects contained within the Active Transportation Plan. Also, line item number 25 is a proposed Protected Class IV Bike Path for the Mitchell Road Corridor with a preliminary estimate of $1,950,000. Although the Mitchell Road Corridor is a perfect place for Class IV Protected Lane, cyclists are better served by accessing the Class I Bike Path along the canal. Please save the $1.9 million expense and use it to enhance the canal and its signage, as well as pedestrian and cyclist safety at the Mitchell and Hatch intersection, along with the upgrades listed above. Thank you for your time, Alvaro Franco."
Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, citizens' communication is now closed. Moving on. There is no appointments or commissions. Is there any conflicts of interest by the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict with item six of the agenda, so I'd like to excuse myself from that one.
Noted. Thank you very much. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a single roll call. Is there anyone in the council that would like a consent item pulled for further discussion? Any and none? Is there anybody in the public that would like to pull an item for further discussion? Any hands on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, looking for a motion. Councilmember Vieira has pushed her button.
Mayor, I wanted to pull six and a motion to approve one through five.
For a second.
I'll second that.
Are you going to?
Mayor, hate to interrupt. For clarification, the motion was to pull six and a motion for items one through five.
That's correct.
So councilmember Martinez can only vote in second on one through five. So if we can please take that separately. So a motion for one through five first.
So let's get a motion for one through five first, and then we'll go ahead and?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve items one through five in the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Who seconded it?
Oh, she did. I was just asking for a second.
Gotcha. District one, councilmember Casey.
Aye.
District two, councilmember Vieira.
Aye.
District four, councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And because of item number six being pulled, Mr. Martinez will have to excuse himself, and we'll call you back as soon as this is resolved. Thank you. Ms. Vieira. Item number six. No questions at all?
No, my question regarding number six, I just read the email, has been resolved with an email from Alex. Thank you.
Awesome. Looking for a motion for item number six, unless anybody from the public has any comments or questions. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve number six on the consent calendar.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vieira.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. One second as councilmember Martinez comes back. Moving on to new business. Item number seven. Resolution number 2023-24, authorizing city manager to approve a project agreed with Red Incorporated Architects for the 1921 Rockefeller Drive Tenant Improvement Project and authorizing the city manager to approve the budget amendment for appropriate funds. This goes out to New Royal.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just want to just go over the history of this property. I want to bring to you tonight a tender approval project located at 1921 Rockefeller Drive property and share some of the history for you for acquiring this specific location. TCP or 123 trichloroprene, which was an impurity in the soil fugments used in the 1950s to 1980s, has been detected in the multiple wells used by the city for drinking water with our community. The State Water Resource Board adopted a maximum contaminant level for the TCP that went into an effect in January 1, 2018. At that time, city has six wells that were not in compliance with that order. Due to the city not complying with that order, compliance of order was issued by the State Water Board to have the contaminant either treated or well removed from service. To date, five of the six wells have been treated and in service except for well 22 located in 1920 Rockefeller Drive in Series. Existing well site, existing well 22 site is very limited in space and extremely tight to add any large water treatment equipment. The city then started acquiring for the property close to the well site. After more than a year searching for the property, multiple appraisals, and dealing with adjacent property owners, nothing became available. In early spring of 2021, the property owner of 1921 Rockefeller Drive has showed interest and accepted the city offer to purchase the entire site for the conjunction use for a treatment site for well 22 and as well newly located water yard for staff. On May 10, 2021, city council approved the purchase of 1921 Rockefeller Drive property and the amount of $1.5 million. Funds for the property purchase came from the proceeds of the TCP litigation settlement. Immediately after acquiring this property, staff started working with a professional consultant design team on well 22 site expansion for the TCP treatment. Design work is currently at 60% and ready to be completed by late spring of this year and construction starting in the summer of 2023. City staff has been also working with planning and designing firm Red Ink Architects from Modesto for approximately four years on a corporation master plan. Throughout that process, it has been apparent that the city staff is outgrowing the available property at the existing corporation yard. After further consideration, it was determined that the 1921 Rockefeller Drive property was consistent with two separate, which consists of two separate lodge metal buildings and spacious parking lot area would be a good fit for the water staff to run their daily operation, freeing space with the existing courtyard and allowing construction activities within the near future of the courtyard building to take place. Currently, staff is also working with Red Ink Architects on 1921 Rockefeller Tenant Improvement Design. A preliminary design work is to have both metal buildings renovated. Building one would be to house the water admin and operations staff, and building two would be used for storage, equipment, and materials. Thank you, and I'm willing to take any answers. I mean, any questions?
That was a mouthful. Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, and I'll bring this back to the council for a motion. I'm sorry, was that, bring this back to the council for a motion, approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-24, authorizing the city manager to approve project amendment agreement with Red Ink Architects for the 1921 Rockefeller Drive.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vieira.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. There's no discussion items. Is there any councilmember referrals today? Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, I do have one referral. I was working with the Chamber of Commerce and with Amy there at the Chamber Office. They're going to be putting together a legislative breakfast in April. I know that they've already contacted Representative Duarte, Alanise, Senator Alvaro Gil, and I believe Supervisor Condit. I was hoping somebody from the city could reach out, and maybe the city could partner with the chamber and help sponsor the event so that they can use the large area and make it more affordable for the public to come to this breakfast and meet all of series representatives. I don't know if that's Alex or who would be able to spearhead that.
Looking for counsel for a nod. That's. I'm okay with that. We're on consensus. Alex?
We'll certainly follow up with the chamber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember.
Is there any additional referrals? Yeah, you go ahead.
Right. I know the interview is for the Measure H, but I noticed that it means only one meeting for Angela, and then we'd have to go through the whole process again. And then also the other young man whose term expires this year. He never got a full term because him and I were appointed later in the last year. So we're wondering if it's possible to possibly consider maybe extending their appointments since it's only one meeting, and we went through several months just to get that one seat filled.
Yeah, I believe you're speaking of Mr. Josh Steely. So staff will be bringing back an item under appointments in the next, probably the next meeting, so the March 13 meeting, if not maybe the March 27, to get council consensus on extending both Ms. Huerta's term as well as Mr. Steely, so long as they're in agreeance to that as well.
Thank you, councilmember.
And I think I've had one more, which I think I've already, about the fishing. I noticed people were fishing in the pond, and I don't think we have a fishing ordinance. I know it's posted, no fishing. We have foxes over there and a lot of nature that's living off of that pond now.
Councilmember, what is the referral?
If maybe we can work on getting an ordinance, that way the fishing can be enforced in the no fishing area over at River Bluff Park. Maybe they could read, or we can get redirected into the river where fishing is legal.
Is there any workshops that are coming up that might be something we can, or no, not specifically?
That would be more code-based, and the workshop we have is about the rules and procedures.
Right, okay.
So if it's the council's wish, we'd have to agendize this for follow-up to break down the code and see what could be applicable with potential suggestions.
Hear it out or changes? To hear it out and get a kind of like a report. Okay, in regards to that? Okay, go ahead.
Captain Perry, if we were to move forward and have you guys start enforcing code at the river, do you have a boat and means to, you know, be down there more? Or is that something we would also have to consider?
This is the question is?
If I may, Mayor. I believe the councilmember's question relates to the pond at the Lower River Bluff area and not the river.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe the pond isn't very deep from where?
I don't know what the depth is.
Just from where the young man was fishing, it looked like it was maybe a foot and a half deep.
Right, I do know, if I might, Mr. Mayor. I do know that those ponds are lined in heavy rubber lining, so fishing is, we've prohibited fishing, but we do need an amendment to municipal code to actually be able to enforce that. We've discussed that at the staff level, and are looking to work that in with the other items we're working on to bring that to the council at some point in the future. So what I would suggest is let me have some follow-up with the staff, and we can provide an update to the council, and we would anticipate bringing that back.
Okay. If that, if that. Everything's okay with that? Okay.
Okay.
Good with that. Any other councilmember referrals? Okay, moving on to reports. The only report that I have is on March 2, we'll be having the State of the City address at 5 p.m. So hopefully, everybody here in this room and the public can attend. It will be live and livestreamed at 5 p.m. And that is all for me. And there is the flyer right there for the public. Any other, moving on, councilmembers have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, do you have a flash of light?
Do I? Oh, my apologies. Sometimes they. Councilmember?
Always me. Just kind of comments. This last two weeks, I was able to join the fire department with yet another ride along as well as their crab feed over the weekend. Great time. We had amazing how many things that actually go on in series at the same time. I know our police department is probably very well aware. While I did my ride along on Monday, in about 38 minutes, there was about eight calls that went out. And so they were very, very short-staffed. Also went to the burgers with the cop, which was a great experience. I don't know anyone who doesn't love in and out and hanging out and seeing the SWAT cars. I look forward to my ride along coming up, I believe, next week on Monday morning. I'll be joining the police department, kind of seeing the other side of it because I'm usually with the fire department. They've been very welcoming. And then our business training, we did do that this week as well with our six-month cohort. We actually had a larger group this time. Thank you, Christopher, for coming out and explaining the forms and the requirements here in series and paperwork and becoming an actual business here in series. And he has opened his schedule to work with all of the businesses individually as well. Anyone who wanted to start a business, I appreciate him coming out. And then lastly, I'm just going to touch on the Series Youth Commission. We've been working with series. We had our joint meeting this last week, where they had mentioned that they've been meeting with it forward to the upcoming meeting as well and collaborating with the youth here in series. Thank you.
Councilmember, I want to thank you for that cohort. That is an excellent job that you did with that. So thank you very much. Any other councilmembers? Nothing? Moving on to city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, last week, we met with Congressman Duarte. You and I, we had a introductory meeting with the congressman. The congressman's staff person, Mr. Santos, was also in attendance, and I do see him in the back of the room. So please thank the congressman for his time, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Yes, I'm sure he'll get an opportunity to touch on that a little bit in here, a little bit. Thank you for reminding me about that. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Nothing to report other than I would like to do a formal introduction of our guest tonight, Fatima Joleri, who is one of the newest additions to our firm and has been assisting on litigation matters and some municipal transactional matters, and thought I'd have her come along to join us at the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Welcome. Moving on to the departments. Any comments from the department heads? That sounds pretty cool. I think that code enforcement presentation was good enough, right? Yes. I'm not too sure if the county supervisor is online, but I do not see him here present today. No? Santos, would you like to make a comment today, sir? Come on up. We're always going to put you on the spot, especially if you're here in person. It's always great to hear from you and Duarte's office.
Thank you. Chris San Santos, Field Representative for Congressman John Duarte. We're extremely glad to finally have that introductory meeting with Mayor Lopez, city manager, and the congressman. We're incredibly grateful that we're opening up a clear channel of communication. We want to make sure that you feel free to communicate any concerns or matters that our office could be of assistance with. As we now know, Congressman Duarte's got some pretty good committee assignments for the Central Valley. He's on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, the Natural Resources Committee, and the Agriculture Committee, including some very important subcommittees, including Highway and Transit, Water and Resources, Railroad's, and hazardous materials and others as well. And fantastic presentation by code enforcement here in series. I believe there was federal funding brought up there, so I'd love to have any follow-up from City of Series and see if we could address that. Of course, I have to manage expectations, but would love to look into exactly the type of federal funding assistance to you guys as well. So thank you for your great work and thankful to the serious community for having me at the series lines, crab feed, the pancake breakfast, and many other fantastic community events. Our teams enjoyed it greatly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Santos. We'll most definitely put that on the long list that we gave you that one day. But thank you very much. Okay, I believe that is it. We will now adjourn this meeting and go to closed session for conference regarding existing litigation. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment in regards to the closed session item?
Mayor, for the record, if you can read the case number, please.
Case number? My apologies. Conference with Legal Counsel, which is case number 54956, City of Series versus Espana, San Luis County Supervisor Court, case number CB 22000383. Thank you very much.
Welcome back everyone, there is no reportable action. Thank you.